Looks like Pepsi.
Yep.
Okay, we're ready to go whenever you are.
All right, if you all join me in pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which is its hands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good morning, everyone. We will start the Tuesday, March twenty first, two thousand and twenty-three board meeting with public comment period. Is there anybody from the pub- public that needs to make comment, or wants to make comment, I should say? Hearing none, we'll move on. I do have a couple of things. The Southwest Minnesota Arts Council, just Dear Meeker County, thank you for your generous donation of twelve hundred dollars on one January twenty-three. We appreciate your support. With your generous donation, we're able to continue promoting the arts in the eighteen counties of our region. Darlene Cottle, Meeker County, S M E C Board Member. We have that. And then coming up here in just a minute on our consent agenda, we'll be making some assuming we'll be moving Bill Hudson into a chief deputy position. We want to recognize Becky Howell, who's like your retirement is for April fourteenth. We thank you for your years of service, and I'm sure there'll be a word on a celebration of some kind to follow, so. But we just want to recognize you, so thanks as long as you're here, Becky. Appreciate it. With that, I would look for a motion to approve the board meeting agenda.
No additions?
We do have one addition today.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And that will be the approval of the higher assistant county attorney Stephanie Scorro, and we're going to add that on to the regular agenda just prior to my item on the agenda.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I would move the agenda as amended.
Motion by Paul?
Second.
Second.
Second by Danny and Julie. Is there any further discussion or questions on the consent agenda? Hearing none, we'll be doing roll call today, too, correct, Corey?
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Sheefelbein?
Yes.
Commissioner Bredesen?
Yes.
And Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes. All right. The agenda is done, and then we will move on to the consent agenda. Andrew, if you want to walk us through all those items?
Today, we have approval of the March seventh, twenty twenty-three board meeting minutes. Approval of the social services, county, and hospitals accounts payable. Approval of the promotion of accounting assistant Charisse Vogel to child support accountant supervisor at C forty-two, twenty-nine, forty-two per hour, effective April third. Approval of the higher full-time social worker Summer Roth, level C forty-one, step three, twenty-nine, eighty-three an hour, effective March twenty-second. Approval of the higher part-time dispatcher Amy Burquist, level B twenty-three, step six, twenty-six, fifty an hour, effective March twenty-second. Approval of the higher full-time corrections officer Brenda Cram, level B twenty-three, step seven, twenty-seven, thirty-one an hour, effective on, I believe, April first?
Sorry?
April zero. April tenth.
Yeah.
Approval of the promotion of deputy investigator Bill Hudson to chief deputy, forty-eight, sixty-four an hour, effective April first. Approval, appoint chief deputy Hudson as delegate to the Southwest EMS Board, effective April fifteenth. Point chief deputy Hudson as delegate or alternate to various C M E S B committees, effective April fifteenth. Proof the renewal of consumption display permit for Riverside Store Tavern. Approval of temporary on-sale liquor license for Forest City Threshers for an event on May twenty-eighth. Resolution twenty twenty-three oh eight, which is the opioid supply chain participants memorandum of agreement. Approval of the twenty twenty-three Safe Assure Agreement. And approval of waterfront restoration contract for watercraft inspections. With that, that concludes the consent agenda.
All right, are there any questions on any item on the agenda there? I-
I had a question.
Go ahead, Julie.
There's a payment to a company called Advanced Corrections Healthcare for twelve thousand nine hundred ninety-nine. Is that like a once-a-year payment, or what is, what is that for?
It's a monthly payment, Commissioner Bredesen. That is the jail medical contract that, that you all approved a month or two ago.
Okay, so that's the one. All right. And that's monthly?
Yes.
Okay. Then I had another question. Sand Tech Consulting Services, four payments for landfill. I don't know if Greg is there, but what is that all about?
That's for consulting, engineering consulting for the landfill. It's a monthly charge they fee, or fee they charge.
Okay, and that's a monthly as well?
Yep.
Those were my two questions.
All right. Thanks, Julie. I had a question on the, on the opioid. Just as long as it's in here. Is there, there's talk that there's going to be another round? I think there are lawsuits against like CVS and Walmart and-
That is what this agreement covers, is those retailers. Yep.
Okay.
I believe two distributors that are part of this settlement agreement and three retailers.
And I should probably retract the names because I think that's who it is. I'm not certain, but I don't know.
But, well, it is, it's in the RBA, but that's who this is.
Okay, all right. So that includes, listen to that. All right. Anything else on the consent agenda?
Oh, we got corrections with this new addition. Is it a just-
We're still down six professional officers?
Six, yeah.
We still have some in the background process.
Okay.
We're still doing interviews.
Okay.
Anything else? Hearing none, we'll look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, move to approve the consent agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Johnson.
Second.
Do we, do we have to take a resolution separate from the consent agenda, or can we do it all in one swoop?
Everything's a resolution.
It can all be, it can all be done as one, Commissioner Bredesen.
It can be done. Okay, thank you.
Yep. It'll all be one resolution.
Okay.
Our roll call vote on the whole thing. Corey, with that, would you?
Commissioner Bredesen?
Yes.
Commissioner Sheefelbein?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes. All right, now we'll move on. Greg Schultz, land use director. Morning.
Greg, morning. Greg Schultz, land use director, this morning I got one item that is the resolution to extend the Meeker County Comprehensive Local Water Management Plan. This is a plan that's been in place since June fourth, two thousand and thirteen. It expires in demand of twenty-three. And why this has come about is that the Bowser is requiring, and, yeah, it's requiring us to extend our existing plan because not all of our one water, one watershed plans have been approved yet. So until all our one watershed, one plan approvals for particularly the Saint Cloud District and the South Fork River is approved, we're compliant of having a management plan for whole county. So what this does, it has been instructed by Bowser to get this resolution passed to extend the timeline beyond May twenty-three, and I put an extension on just until those plans get approved. And this will take care of that until those plans get approved, covering whole county. So. Your plan up in North Fork must be close to-
I think we're having our first policy meeting Friday.
We have one also. Friday, which is also our local drainage meeting.
Oh.
Remember the one we went to Glencoe last year?
Oh, yeah.
That's this Friday.
All right. All right, so we have resolution twenty, twenty twenty-three dash oh nine, extending Meeker County Comprehensive Local Water Management Plan. And how far out did you want to go with this, Greg? Or how do you-
Until it's approved, until the South Fork and the Mississippi Plains are approved.
Okay.
And you put a different on it. Yeah, because that may be a while for ours, because we're a long ways from- South Fork's a long one.
Yeah.
And so is the Mississippi.
Yeah.
I hope maybe a year will be enough.
So, but you don't have a timeline. I think that's the way to vote.
I'd look for a motion on that.
With that said, Mr. Chair, move to approve a resolution authorizing Meeker County to request Minnesota Bowser to extend the effective date of the current county comprehensive local water management plan until all watersheds within the county have approved. One watershed, one plan.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Sheefelbein.
I will second that motion.
And a second by Commissioner Johnson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, Corey, will you take the role, please?
Yes. Yes.
Commissioner Bredesen?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes. All right, motion carried. All right. Phil Schmoll is Public Works Director.
Good morning. Again, Phil Schmoll is Public Works Director. One item for consideration this morning. So the item I have for you is to consider rejecting the bids for our paving project, twenty twenty-three paving that we opened a week or so ago. So there was a discrepancy with the contract that triggered us attempting to put out an addendum, which would be a change to the contract twenty-four hours in advance of the bid opening. The addendum or the change didn't post, so contractors didn't have access to the change till immediately before the bid opening. And subsequently, it, it, the bid process wasn't pure because of that. So in light of that, we would recommend rejecting bids and we'll re-advertise and rebid. There's one minor change in the contract that we're rolling out with the proposal, including the correction of the discrepancy that existed within the proposal originally.
Mr. Chair, move to reject all bids for zero four seven six one four zero two two and zero four seven six oh four zero one six and zero four seven six hundred zero one three and rebid the project in the near future.
Motion by Commissioner Johnson.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bredesen. Is there any questions for Phil or discussion? Hearing none, Corey, will you take the role?
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bredesen?
Yes.
Commissioner Sheefelbein?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Phil.
Not on the agenda, but annually I do hand these out. It's an update to our state funding for Trump Highway's county roads, townships.
Thank you.
So if you're interested, how the money shakes out, there's a description. And for comparison, year over year, we're one and a half percent down from what we were in twenty twenty-two. So that's something we're struggling with, certainly as construction costs increase, our funding will decrease.
Is there conversation on, there's a lot of transportation conversation down at legislature, is that?
Those conversations have been happening for a decade or more, and not much changes.
But it does appear that the auto parts sales tax might be destined to highway. Is that going to be enough, though?
Um, I don't know how much of it is left. They added more of the auto vehicle, the part sales tax in twenty twenty-two, so we did see an increase from twenty-one from that. You know, would it be enough for a while, I suppose? Primary source of funding, if you look on there, is fuel tax. And as you know, that's kind of a regressive tax, and it doesn't, it doesn't adjust with inflation, so over time it won't keep up.
All right. Sounds good, Phil. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mikel Johnson, Human Resources.
Good morning, Mikel Johnson. The first thing that I have before you today is to ratify the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four M N P license contract. This contract includes deputies, investigators, and courthouse security checkpoint officer. The changes include a three percent cost of living for two thousand twenty-three and two thousand twenty-four, implementing the market adjustments in two thousand twenty-three, removing language-requiring discharges to be preceded by a five-day suspension, other language changes including updated vacation accruals to match the non-union employees, court cancellates, court cancellation hours. We added good standing language for sick leave severance and good standing language for bank holidays, added SWAT uniforms that if they're damaged and in line of duty or need replacement, that that would be provided by the county, added language for compensation of canine handlers, and in year one of the contract, effective one-one, dropped one step and added one step to the salary schedule. Also, year one of the contract, also effective one-one, added seventy-five cents to each step as a licensed deputy of labor shortage adjustment. Updated the health insurance language to state that the county and the employee will each contribute fifty percent on, to the increase on the total premium, with an addition of a cap on the increase if the total premium increases by more than ten percent. Added Juneteenth and increased the shift if from seventy cents an hour to eighty-five cents an hour.
All right, do we have any questions? Hearing none, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to ratify the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four M N P license contract.
A motion by Commissioner Sheefelbein.
Second.
I have a second, second by Commissioner Bredesen. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Corey, will you take the role, please?
Commissioner Sheefelbein?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bredesen?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes. All right, next item.
The next item is approval of the AFSCM attorney contract. So this, the main changes from the previous contract include a three percent cost of living for two thousand twenty-three and twenty-four, updated health insurance language, removal of the language requiring discharges to be preceded by a five-day suspension, general updated language for vacation accruals and added good standing language for sick leave severance, added language for on-call that required receiving approval by the county attorney and meeting qualifications, updated the maximum payout for sick severance to include an additional thirty-year category with a maximum payout for regular sick at fifteen thousand and deferred sick to include a maximum payout of sixty-five hundred, and added Juneteenth.
All right. Any questions on the attorney contract? Hearing none, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to ratify the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four A F S C M E attorney contract.
Motion, Commissioner Sheefelbein. Do I hear a second?
I will second.
Second by Commissioner Johnson. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, Corey, will you take the role, please?
Commissioner Bredesen?
Yes.
Commissioner Sheefelbein?
Yeah.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Thank you.
So this is an update, then we just have two contracts left that will be working.
Thank you, Mikel. Being we're early, do we want to hop ahead and take those?
Yes, we're going to hop ahead, and we're going to do the Cedar Mills Gun Club annual fee for license.
Perfect. Good morning, Barb.
Good morning. Fair Block County Auditor. The request I have before you, and this is not on the consent agenda, is a new type of license that we're going to be affording here. So it's an on-sale retail liquor license specific to clubs. A club can make this application if they have a certain amount of membership that in existence for a period of time, provide liability insurance, have documented guests. So the intent of the Cedar Mills Gun Club is to have this for their meetings, their monthly meetings, when it's the members, memberships and bona fide guests, to which one of the requirements is that they have a sign-in book. The other reason it's before the board on non-consent is this is not part of the fee schedule. And so exploring the fees and looking at the statutory guidelines, it's based on a maximum on a number of members to their club, but in line with other fees that we have, we are suggesting a fifty-dollar annual fee. So in the approval, which will also go to the alcohol and gambling as a final, would be to approve the on-sale retail liquor license for the Cedar Mills Gun Club, the club license, and also to set the annual fee at fifty dollars.
All right. Any questions on that? If not, I would look for a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I move, move, club on-sale retail liquor license for Cedar Mills Gun Club instead of fifty-dollar annual fee.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Bredesen. Do I hear a second?
I will second that.
And a second by Commissioner Johnson. Is there any further discussion, questions? Corey, will you take the role, please?
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Sheefelbein?
Yes.
Commissioner Bredesen?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes. Motion carried. All right, thanks, Barb.
We could take the next item real quick as well, which is the approval of the higher assistant county attorney Stephanie Scorro, level D sixty-one, step five, forty, forty-eight per hour, pending background check.
All right. Any questions on that? If not, I'd look for a motion to approve the higher assistant county attorney.
I don't have it open, but I'll move to approve.
It's up on the screen. I have a motion by-
I didn't look that far.
Commissioner Johnson.
I'll second that.
And a second by Commissioner Bredesen. Any further discussion?
Any luck with paralegal search yet?
Nope, that position is still open. Applications are still being accepted.
All right. Anything else? Hearing nothing, Corey, will you take the role, please?
Commissioner Sheefelbein?
Yes.
Commissioner Bredesen?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes. Motion carried.
We have now concluded all the things. I believe that we could conclude within seven minutes.
Yeah. Barb, the drainage meeting for this Friday.
Sunday, Friday?
Yeah, Danny's not going to be there, and there's been no agenda sent out.
I know. I don't know why McCloud hasn't done the agenda. I was going to explore that today. So it's the annual meeting of the joint drainage boards for the five counties to which commissioners are there. I don't know that there's any item on them that needs a quorum. However, it would be Wright County joint pitches. Danny would have one or two. Paul, you would have numerous, because you're on the South Fork with Red Mill and McCloud. And I believe, Steve, you have a few that also attach to Red Mill for yourself. So whether you plan to attend, I do, I will explore getting an agenda somehow.
Or they need to reschedule, because nobody has been notified other than-
I've gotten my notification, and the news is that they notified this last year. So I know it's, it's a difficult one.
Yeah.
But I'll see if I can't explore an agenda for that.
Thank you, appreciate that.
I believe it's more procedural than anything at this time.
They still need a quorum, because they'll have to approve last year's.
Exactly.
So.
Exactly.
Do we have to represent here or not then for this particular meeting?
For the annual meeting?
Mm-hmm.
We should have two commissioners there, or approximately that. I know Phil has been talking about going, and I know John and I probably will both be going. It's pretty common. But I'll explore why the agenda issues is slow.
Because, you know, if we only have minutes and procedural things to, then would we really need to have, I have a one watershed meeting just prior to it in Glencoe, so I'm going to be there anyway. But would we need two commissioners at that point?
I don't think I look at what's on the agenda. I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't know what's being submitted, but any of the other counties at this point, Meeker County, is submitting anything other than regular billing.
Mine's summer north. I don't even know where it's at yet, to be honest.
Or Google map it.
Didn't we, at one point in time, didn't, like, most of us go to Glencoe?
We've had as many as three of you along with the highway engineer and the drainage inspector before. Sometimes there's more items on the agenda that are being worked through, like the joint policies and things that was really important.
That might have been.
That's why I say I don't, I haven't seen the agenda. McCloud has taken the lead on that agenda for a number of years, and so it kind of left it in there ballpark.
I think if I remember right, the one, the time I'm thinking of, you kindly asked us all to go down or to work on the joint powers agreement.
Very definitely did, because that was a big thing for all of our-
We got ball and told to be in Glencoe.
Ball and told. Sounds like my home life.
You know, up here in Meeker, we just roll with it, don't we?
Well, I, I think we do have, just like another county. I'll be working on that afternoon, and I don't have Meeker County materials together either yet.
Last year, we did have a couple of key issues, as I recall.
There were some issues.
Yeah.
Some of the larger, I'm assuming there's things between Seville and McCloud that will be discussed. You know, we're on the border, and we may be involved and we may not. Same with Red Mill. Red Mill's pretty aggressive. We're involved, minor.
Yeah.
As, as the small county. I think we have pretty much our group here, and we are also represented by Kale remotely and Ron Ringquist remotely. So I should go ahead with our-
I've got eight, eight fifty-nine, so we're right there, so. All right, so then I will adjourn, or recess as the county board and convene as the county ditch authority. This morning, we will be, um, let's look at my script here a little bit. Make sure I got everything. We'll be hearing the matter petition removal of property on county ditch thirty-five, and then we will follow that up and, and the matter petition for the abandonment of Meeker County ditch forty-eight. So we'll take thirty-five first and then forty-eight. Welcome, everyone. We have several of you in the room today.
Just audio check that Kale could be heard as well.
All right. Kale, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Absolutely.
And Chair, I do have a recommendation to amend the agenda for the Drainage Authority when you're ready for it.
I think I'm ready right now.
I'm on the agenda for the hearing at nine o'clock for the removal of property from county ditch thirty-five. I'd like to ask the board to move to amend the agenda to add a report from viewer Ron Ringquist between the remarks from the petitioner and the public comment portion of the hearing.
All right. We'll call that D one. So we have that added. Is there anything else, Kale? Any other updates?
That's it for updates to the agenda.
All right. Do we need to approve this agenda officially? Would you like that?
I believe that would be yes. I think I would go through the script that he has provided, and he is indicating yes.
Okay, all right. Well, I'd like to welcome everyone who has come this morning for these public hearings before to Meeker County Drainage Authority. The purpose of our meeting is to receive comments and testimony from all parties interested in the Smith Investment Group petition for removal of property from county ditch thirty-five, or the petition for abandonment of county ditch forty-eight. Please take note that these are evidentiary proceedings, and notes are being taken by our staff to preserve the record of the hearing. First, we'll receive testimony and comments from all parties interested in the petition to remove the property from county ditch thirty-five. Following that, we'll receive testimony and comments from all parties interested in the petition to abandon county ditch forty-eight. With that, I would like to now open the public hearing for the Smith Investment Group's petition for removal of property from county ditch thirty-five. The order of business for this hearing will be as follows. First, Mr. Kale Van Brugan, the Drainage Authority's attorney, will give an overview of the process, which has been brought- First, Mr. Kale Van Brugan, the Drainage Authority's attorney, will give an overview of the process which has been brought us to this public hearing and the purpose for the hearing. Uh, then Kale, uh, following his presentation, uh, Meeker County auditor Bar Block will submit for the record evidence of compliance with the Drainage Code's notice requirements for this hearing. Following Ms. Locks, one or more representatives from Smith and Ma- Investment Group will be given an opportunity to present, present their petition and discuss their proposal for removing property from the benefited area of county ditch thirty-five. And finally, we would like to hear any other interested persons' comments on the property removal petition. If you would like to make a comment, uh, when the public comment period is opened, come up to the, to the table, to the podium here. Uh, when I recognize you, uh, state your name and address, so we have that for the record, so we know, uh, where you're at in the system. Um, we may ask our staff, the petitioner, or legal counsel to respond to your comments. If you have anything in writing you wish to submit, you can provide it to me during the public comment portion of the hearing. And with that, we get started to, uh, would any of the board members, do any of the commissioners here, uh, wish to offer any further remarks before we begin? Good. With that, I'm gonna turn it over to Kale.
Thanks Chairman Schmidt. Before I do my presentation, I'd just ask the Chair to entertain a motion to approve the agenda with the amendment of adding Ron Ringquist's report.
All right, I would look for-
I still move to accept the agenda as amended.
I have a motion by Commissioner Bredesen. Look for a second.
I'll second that.
And I have a second by Commissioner Johnson. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Corey, would you take the role, please?
Commissioner Schiefelbein?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson? Commissioner Bredesen?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes. All right, Kale?
Thanks Chairman Schmidt and members of the Board of Commissioners serving as the Drainage Authority for this hearing. For the public, I'm Kale Van Brugan. I'm an attorney with Rinkin Newton Law Firm. Our firm represents Meeker County in its capacity as the Drainage Authority for Meeker County ditch thirty-five. Um, we're here today because a petition was received by the Meeker County Auditor on November twenty-second, twenty-twenty-two from Smith Investment Group. That petition was filed under Minnesota Statute Section one oh three E point eight zero five. That's the section of the Minnesota Drainage Code.
Kale, we want-
Has benefited from a drainage system.
Sorry, sorry Kale, you cut out, you cut out for just a second there.
Okay. Um, the petition was received November twenty-second. It was filed under one oh three E point eight zero five. And that is the section of the Drainage Code dealing with the removal of property from the benefited area of a drainage system. The petitioners own a parcel in Section twenty-two Township one nineteen, range thirty. And, uh, that parcel is, uh, approximately forty acres. The petitioners are petitioning for removal of thirty-five point six-three acres from the benefited area of the drainage system. And in their petition, they allege this is due to enrollment of that acreage in a permanent conservation easement with Bowser that requires that the water on the property be retained and stored and that there is no benefit, um, as such, by the drainage system for those acres. The petition alleges that the waters from their property have been diverted from the drainage system and that their property cannot significantly or regularly use the drainage system as an outlet. Petition also notes that in December of twenty-twenty-one, the Meeker County Highway Department installed berm's to block drainage from the property to county ditch thirty-five. And that in September of two thousand and twenty-two, converted wetlands on the property were restored for swamp buster purposes with the USDA and RCS. Um, the petition alleges that drainage would need to overcome these two berm's in order to reach the drainage system and that removing this property from the drainage system would not prejudice other owners. This is an evidentiary hearing where the board will hear comments and testimony from the petitioners from one of the Minnesota viewers, Ron Ringquist, and then we'll open the floor for public comments and questions. The statute one oh three E point eight zero five states that for the board to grant this petition, the board must find that all three of the following conditions exist based on the evidence you receive. First is that waters from the petitioner's property have been diverted from the drainage system or that the property cannot significantly or regularly use the drainage system. Number two, that the property is not benefited by the drainage system. And number three, that removing the property from the system will not prejudice the property owners and property remaining in the system. There's a common question I get under these type of proceedings as to whether or not the board can change the benefit amount or whether the statute contemplates an all or nothing, meaning can you reduce the benefit? Or are you limited to just either denying the petition or granting the petition and removing the property completely? Um, as written, the statute is an all or nothing statute. It says if those three things exist, you can remove the property. Um, a pure reading of the statute would say that to reduce the benefit, you would need to do a redetermination of benefits on the ditch system. Now, I, I know that some drainage authorities have used this proceeding to modify benefits. But I just want the board to be aware that, you know, that does come with some risk if there's an appeal or a challenge by another landowner. Um, but as far as the statute, uh, in subdivision three, it states that if all three of those conditions exist, then the board is to grant the petition. With that, Chairman Schmidt, are there any questions from you or the other board members about the purpose of the hearing or what the statute requires?
I don't have anything. Any other board member got a question for Kale? I think we're good there, Kale.
Thank you.
All right, Barb?
Okay, to provide evidence that we were compliant with the Drainage Code and notice requirements, posted, published, also using our webpage and mailed notices to all the individuals on this system February seventeen, twenty-twenty-three.
All right. Does anybody have any questions? Board members have any questions for Barb? Hearing none. With that, we're ready to hear from petitioners. So if anybody'd like to come to the, Mike, please identify yourself for the record.
Good morning Commissioners. My name is Michael Smith, co-owner of Smith Investment Group. Uh, don't let the name fool you. Smith Investment Group is me and my brother. We inherited a small chunk of money from our, and the best way to keep that chunk together was to put it into an LLC. And unfortunately with the name Smith, a lot of those LLC names were already taken. Smith Farms, Smith Brothers. We got Smith Investment Group, so here we are. We had the chunk of money, the LLC bought this property back in two thousand and nineteen. Didn't have a lot of knowledge about the property at that time. Uh, after we made the purchase, we quickly found out this property does have quite a long history with many, uh, government and non-government agencies. Um, and we've been looking ever since trying to find a permanent win-win solution for all those parties that we can. Uh, those parties include the NRCS. Uh, this property did have wetland violations on it. Uh, so the NRCS was definitely involved. Meeker County, our neighbors, and the investment group, uh, all trying to find that win-win solution. And we think we pretty much have it. Um, we've locked in the property into a permanent wetland conservation easement. So that water, we want it to stay on the property, uh, and that's forever. That's a permanent one. Uh, so that's been done. That was approved in twenty-twenty, tw- tw- sorry, twenty-twenty-one with the wetland restoration happening last year in twenty-twenty-two. Um, the wetland restoration coupled with the berm's that the county put in back in twenty-twenty-one, uh, we feel significantly remove us from the drainage system. We also feel that with the new berm's the county put in, there's less impact on the neighbors, which is a good thing. So it's a win for them as well and it's a win for Meeker County because they want less water on the property. So the, the current berm height was set by the county to allow for a little bit of drainage. Um, the previous berm the county took out without approval, um, was a total blockage and retained all the water on the property, uh, which was creating some issues, I guess, with the county or with the neighbor or something. But the, the new berm's are lower. Uh, some water will eventually drain. It does take a significant amount of rain for that to occur. Uh, they anticipate about once a year, water may leave the property and enter the county ditch system. And that's kind of the, the compromise we've all reached, so. We feel that we've met the three stipulations in the statute to remove the property. It doesn't significantly regularly use the ditch system. It does not benefit, this property does not benefit from the drainage system. And, uh, removing this will not impact other, uh, ditch members, so. Uh, we are requesting thirty-five point six-three acres be removed. That is the amount of the permanent wetland conservation easement. So we're not asking for a full forty to be removed, just the easement, uh, quantity that's in the wetland conservation easement. And that's all I have for today. We do, they presented a bunch of, uh, documents. Uh, this is a picture on the screen of the wetland restoration with the berm's. The berm's were engineered by the NCRS and, uh, were built to keep the water on this parcel of land without impact to the neighboring properties. The berm, the other berm's we're talking about are in the southwest corner of the property. Uh, there was one big berm that totally blocked access to the culvert. Uh, that was replaced with two smaller ones right there. If you would go back one more. One more slide please. All right, so the previous berm the county took out was right in front of that culvert that you see in the picture and was at that same height as the, the field and that fence supposed to see in the background and provided a total blockage of exit to water from the property. The county, even though that berm was on private property and part of an NRCS agreement back in two thousand, that that berm had to be there. The county came in and took that berm out. As soon as we notified the county that berm had to be there as part of NRCS agreement, they agreed to come back in and reinstall a berm. They actually installed two new berm's instead of one and they made them smaller. If you look at the next slide, they replaced that one berm, big berm that was in front of the culverts with two smaller berm's in blue. As you can also see in this picture, there was a lot of water in those, um, canals. Uh, that's because that previous berm when this picture was taken did a total blockage of the water and it kept all the water in those canals. The new berm doesn't do that, but that's what the county wanted. It was kind of part of the compromise, so that is all I have at this point. Is there any questions from me or Smith Investment Group?
I don't have anything. Julie, do you have any questions?
The, you talked about a permanent water, uh, and, and an agreement with, with whom was that? You made a permanent agreement for an easement. What was that?
We have a permanent wetland conservation easement. So that's, that's been a filed, uh, easement that's with the property, um, that will be there forever. So it cannot be used for agricultural purposes. It cannot be farmed, it cannot be grazed, it cannot be hayed. We can't do anything with the property. It is a wetland conservation area.
I think, I think she's asking, was it NRCS? Who, who is agreement with? Is it REM? Is it, I mean, who?
It's CREP.
CREP. It's sort of the CREP program.
Yeah.
Okay.
Does that answer your question, Julie?
Yep, and, and this is an easement only. Do the property owners still own their property? And, and do they pay taxes?
We still own it. We still pay tax on it, yes. So we have a lot of money going out on this property, but we'll have no money coming in because it can't be used for any agricultural purpose.
Was it used for agriculture in the past?
Yes, uh, which is, yes. Um, and a previous owner drained a bunch of the wetlands without approval, which got into some trouble with the government. It was into CRP for a couple of years. It came out of CRP in about two thousand and eighteen or nineteen. Um, so it was gonna go back into farm use around those wetland violation areas. But now it cannot do that because it's in a permanent easement.
So there has been a reclassification of this thirty-five acres?
Yes, tax-wise, it's already been reclassified with the permanent easement, uh, in there.
And I'm sorry, did I miss, is there, is the tillable land, are you, you're like in CRP or permanent vegetation on?
Yes, it's in native grasses.
Okay.
So that was all planted last year as well, all the native grasses as part of that conservation easement.
Okay.
So like I said, we're asking for the thirty-five point six-three acres that were part of that easement to be taken out of the county ditch system because we don't need that thirty-five point six-three acres drained at all.
So if I may ask, you referenced a previous owner having done some, uh, drainage of the property. How was that drainage done?
The, I should go, but go back to the others, wait, if you would. I don't have all the details. It happened in the mid to late eighties. Uh, so back when wetland conservation became a big hot topic. Um, he dug the, like a ditch all the way around the perimeter of the property on his side of the property. So that's a private ditch on this parcel of land. Uh, as well as taking the fill from that ditch digging and putting it in the wetlands on that property. So kind of a two-fold violation there. That perimeter ditch then drained through some other private ditches and eventually into the county ditch thirty-five system, which is three quarters of a mile away on the north side of Highway twelve. Why he did that, we don't know. Um, he eventually got caught and had trouble for doing it. And at that point, this property was slapped with wetland violation, uh, issues on it.
And so all of the work that he done has been rectified?
Yes. Wi- with the NRCS now, with last year's work we did, we spent over twelve thousand dollars doing wetland restoration on there. Um, and the NRCS is happy. They restored the number of acres they want to restore. Um, and they're happy with the plan we have in place, so.
I believe the date is December twenty-fourth, nineteen eighty-five. If you did work prior to that, there was a different set of, after that date, a lot of these dri- uh, violations he's talking about, would it, so the work was more than likely done after, mid?
He was caught right on the edge. He started the work the year before that, but didn't finish till after it. And he got dinged for it, looking back at some of the records. And I think he was made an example as one of the first ones in the county. The government came after him pretty hard.
Okay. All right.
Any other questions for me?
I don't have any more.
Oh, I did want one more comment. I see Ron had some comments on the engineering piece we did. Ron is the reviewer. Uh, one comment he made was about not taking into account the neighboring property around us. Uh, the reason for that is the neighboring property is already paying their county ditch fee. That water from their property is already being paid for to go to the county ditch system. So we didn't think having that counted as our water and our property was the right thing to do. Um, we just want to look at our water in that vacuum. What water do we have on our property? What happens to it? So that's why our engineer did it that way, just for the record.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then we'll, uh, that will, that's it for petition comments, so, uh, Barb, did, Phil, did you have some comments or for John?
Let Ron share his comments.
Okay, we'll move into that then.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman, if you're ready for me.
Yes, go ahead, Ron.
Okay, um, I had first looked at this, John had asked me to look at this back in January. And at that time, we did not have any of the information as to the, uh, actual runoff or drainage issues from this particular property. We did have the set of drawings from the NRCS as to what the restoration would be. But there was no information as to when or how much overflow would occur from the property. Uh, I looked at the BAR engineering report and if I read it correctly, it stated that there is an annual discharge from a one-year storm event that will occur from that property. It did talk about the amount of storage, but it also did not mention whether or not that storage was full and standing water or whether that full capability of storing that much water was there all the time other than during larger storm events. So I wasn't certain as to how much or how often that one-year storm would actually overflow if the basins are full and there's a secondary- If the basins are full and there's a secondary storm. Even though it is not of two and a half inches, that secondary storm most likely would overflow and into the ditch system. More frequently than just once a year. With that, I understand the question as to whether or not the original benefits assessed are being realized by the property. Both because of the wetland issues and because it's now in a permanent easement. But I did not address a value at this point. Or whether it is, is a right amount or, or wrong amount of value assessed against the property. That determination was made back when those benefits were determined. So, my thinking is, is that it does regularly overflow and still uses the ditch system as an outlet. And therefore, I do not think that it should be removed from the ditch system. Even though I do understand their, their issue with it not benefiting to the same amount. As it would have if it was still in agricultural use. Or the intended benefit was fully recognized prior to any wetland violation. So, like I said, my recommendation at this point is, is that it should not be removed in its entirety. But we, we, just like years back when we did the other one, that there may be an adjustment of benefits. If a redetermination of benefits was done by the county board to a number of parcels within this ditch system.
Alright, Ron. Does anybody have any questions for Ron?
I have two comments on that.
Come on up.
Ron, you mentioned it's an all or nothing, this is Mike Smith again, by the way. All or nothing stipulation. We're asking for the all, for the thirty-five point six-three acres. We're not asking for all for all forty acres. There's one caveat here, we are going to have some property still in the ditch system potentially. Number two, this whole once-a-year, whenever frequency overflow is with the current berms that are in place that the county put in back in twenty twenty-one. The berm the county took out in twenty twenty was a permanent blockage, which is now what the county wants. So, I'm kind of confused what direction the county wants to go. We had the permanent blockage in there, which would have met the stipulation for this removal. The county took it out and put in these new berms that are lower and allowed drainage. And now we're being punished for that. I don't feel that's right.
Alright, thanks, Mike. Ron, do you have a response to that, or?
Well, I, I was, I was basing my opinion on the current conditions. If a significant berm was constructed in the future that stopped all drainage from that property. Then I would say that it should be removed. But that is still the outlet, even if it's only during larger storms. Most ditch systems are designed for agricultural purposes to contain a ten-year frequency storm. The current ditch is not, does not meet that design, I'm certain. I haven't done detailed analysis of it. But under those circumstances, any additional drainage will impact the limited capacity of the current system. At a greater percentage than if the ditch had that full ten-year capacity. So, it's, as I said, an annual discharge under the current conditions. Means that at least once per year, they're running excess water into the ditch system. And that the ditch is providing the outlet for that, that drainage. I understand that with the change of use, it may not receive the same amount of benefit as was determined during the original proceedings. But, and under all or nothing, I can't say that it should go to zero and that this should be removed. Because it does still contribute to the ditch system and the capacity needed within that ditch system.
Alright. Do we, I mean, the comment has been made that the county put in berms that are not the same size as before. Do we have, do we, no, I need more information.
Yeah, I can explain.
Can you provide that? Somebody had to direct us in that direction, I assume, there's a process.
As I understand it, the original culvert blocking, oh, Phil Schmaltz put it for extractor. The original blockage of the pipe occurred in the, was it early two thousand? Two thousand? We had a concern from a neighboring property owner about.
Hold on, Phil, Andrew, can you bring up the map?
Oh, sure.
Again, so we can look at the, where the pipes are, so you can describe which pipes were, which ones were plugged, eighteen or?
The twenty-four inch culvert.
Well, they were plugged by the same big berm.
Yeah, they were basically buried under a mound of soil.
Okay. They were both buried.
Okay.
And then we received a complaint, I'm estimating in the twenty eighteen nineteen period from an adjacent property owner. As to how their water was supposed to cross the road, because that's our only centerline culvert that crosses nine. If you had south for quite a ways, there, there's nothing else crossing the road. So, we looked at it, didn't really do anything with it until, I don't know what year it was. But somebody had hand dug a trench through the berm, opening up the twenty-four inch culvert. At which point, we contacted Soil and Water to see what's this berm for, do we need to keep it there? And they didn't know anything about it. Waited a little while to see if we hear from anything else, nothing happened. So, we went ahead and removed it and cleaned out our culvert. And then we heard after the fact that that berm was required as part of the condition of this parcel we're discussing today. And we went ahead and replaced the berms that were recommended by the NRCS. Would have recommended the berm heights, and that's what we built for them because we removed the blockage.
And the new berm heights were set to the same height as the ditch elevation?
Yeah, whatever elevation that NRCS outlined for us.
Design, so we don't know, in other words, the original berm, we don't know anything about the?
Well, the original berm would have completely blocked the twenty-four inch.
But I mean, we don't know why that, the why, as to why it was put in.
It's in NRCS records, they required that berm to be installed as a complete blockage. Because that put it, the property into an enhanced wetlands violation, they required that to be a total blockage.
Okay.
Back in two thousand. That culvert that he's speaking of was only installed in nineteen ninety-six when they redid the road. Before then, there was never a culvert.
And the previous owner paid for that culvert.
The twenty-four inch culvert we're talking about at this time?
Previous owner paid for the installation of that culvert. The county gave him the culvert, he paid for the installation, is my belief, from the records I've seen. And they put it at the, at the normal culvert elevation where it's the road, they put it at the lower elevation to the bottom of that private moat that goes around our property.
Plus, they extended it beyond the road right away onto the private property. Which begs the question of how was the county able to trespass on private property and steal our dirt out of the culvert?
We didn't.
And then creating a violation for us?
We just repaired that berm about three months before it was removed.
But it's right, somebody did dig a trench through it. And then we repaired it and plugged that completely because it had to be plugged. Now, they went, trespassed on our property, took the dirt, unplugged it, creating a violation for us. And the only reason we haven't gotten a problem with the NRCS is because we're the ones who reported it. And now they put in the berm lower, and now we're going to get dinged for it because it's lower?
Well, I think, um.
As you can tell, this property has a long history.
Well, that's what I'm trying, I mean, it's hard to make it.
We think this solution is the win-win, it helps the neighbor because drainage still can occur. Yet, we don't want to get penalized for that drainage, as it's correct. And we've made the NRCS happy, so we kind of found that compromise between all the parties, we think, we're trying our best.
Alright, um, I think, so Ron, if you could, my question would be. Without a redetermination, I mean, our option is really, one of our options, I should say, is to re, you agree right now, currents, the way it currently sits, if I'm following you correctly. That a, a redetermination of benefits would reduce the financial impact of this parcel, the way it's evaluated right now, in, in your estimation? Did I follow that correctly?
Yes, I'm, my, my guess, and it's only a guess because I have not looked at how the other properties within the ditch thirty-five watershed are assessed as part of this. But my guess is, is that the benefits to that property would be reduced. Proportion, you know, the value will go up, but proportionate to the cost of all other properties within the watershed, their share would be reduced.
Currently, from what you've, from the information you have and the height of berms and different things like that, that's, that's what you're looking at right now, okay?
Without, without detailed analysis, yes, I'm guessing that the, the benefits to that property, percentage-wise, will be reduced. Even though all values will go up just because of market value increases since the determination was done.
Okay.
Our property values actually got down significantly since we enrolled in the permanent easement.
Sure.
Another reason why I would go probably down, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I understand, I just want to make sure I'm following his guidelines, her recommendations. Alright, with that, I think.
I have a question.
Alright, that was my next question. Does anybody got any further questions? Go ahead, Julie.
The county will reevaluate and re-categorize the property. Without the need of doing a ditch reevaluation, is that correct?
No. I think, I think that's gonna, we're kind of coming up to that, I think Kale's going to clarify this. But the way I'm following this, if we do a redetermination, it's of the entire system. It's all or nothing, so.
But.
And that won't be the county, that'll be the, the drainage system, or it's.
But the county, they, they took it off the rolls of agricultural land and put it into. A, a property classification that would be closer to what the easement now addresses?
As far as the property tax assessment, yes, that's correct.
Yeah, it's, it's in a different.
But the property tax assessment is different than the ditch benefits.
Right, Chairman Schmidt and Commissioner Bredesen, what you're talking about, Commissioner Bredesen, is sort of ad valorem countywide property tax. A different category than what's the benefit the ditch system provides to the property, which is the special assessment tax that we're talking about in the hearing.
Very good, thank you.
Alright, is there any other public comments concerning this petition? Hearing none, Kale, would you, uh, I'll close the public comment portion of this hearing. And then Kale, would you walk us through some of our options based on the discussions today?
I can do that, Chairman Schmidt, just wanted to make sure, John Condon, did you have anything you wanted to present?
No.
John isn't present.
John, John's.
He's not there, okay.
Not, John's on here, Phil is representing, so.
Okay, so, because there were some conflicting requests from petitioners with Ron's report. And this question of, you know, is this an all or nothing option, we did not prepare any draft findings for the board to review today. So, the options that the board have, has in front of it are, you can continue the hearing. And you can request further information from the petitioners, or from staff, or from Mr. Ringquist. And you can come back and revisit that information. You can decide that those three conditions I reviewed in statute, which are on your agenda, do not exist. And you can make a motion that the petition be dismissed. And direct your staff to prepare findings in order for your review at a continued hearing date. In the alternative, you can decide that those three conditions do exist. And you can, by motion, grant the petition and direct staff to prepare findings in order consistent with that directive. But either way, we're looking for a continued hearing date. If, if whichever way the board goes with its deliberations, we can announce the hearing date, time, and location in our motion today. We can avoid incurring additional costs for renoticing. So, now would be the board's time to deliberate the information it heard and, and then use that to lead into a motion as to how it wants to proceed.
Alright, thanks, Kale. Board, what, what are some thoughts here?
Well, were the three questions answered to our satisfaction? Was, is the property not benefited? Was the water diverted? And is there significant issues to anybody else? I, I think, based on facts, we have to answer those three questions to make us, make the correct decision. It's just my opinion.
Julie?
The, the last comments that Kale had, something about at no cost, there was an option at no cost to property owners, what was that again?
I don't remember making, stating in a, a comment about no cost to property owners, Commissioner Bredesen, do you remember anything else about that question? Or are you asking the third and final factor from the statute?
No, it was about, we could delay action and have another meeting. Or we could do the vote of all or nothing. And, and there was something mentioned about if, we, we could reevaluate this, but it wouldn't be a cost to the property owners if we held another meeting. I, I may be confused about.
Oh, uh, thank you, what I, what I was referencing, Commissioner Bredesen, is that in the motion to continue the hearing today. If we can continue it to a date certain, giving the, the date, the time, and the location as part of the motion. We do not need to republish, repost, and remail notice of that continued hearing date.
Okay.
Alright.
What is the proceeding to do a redetermination? That would cost all the, the county, the people in the ditch.
All on the ditch system, her man.
Right, so the board would need to adopt findings that are in statute, appoint three viewers. Mail out the property owners' reports from the viewer's report, and then hold a public hearing on that viewer's report. As an alternative to that, I do know some drainage authorities that have, in special circumstances. Adopted an order in response to a petition like this, reducing the benefits amount. The statute says all or nothing, so there is some risk in doing that. But, you know, certainly the findings could describe some of the unique circumstances here. And the board could ask Mr. Ringquist if he would be willing and able to come up with a, a benefits amount. That reflected the current use, based on the unique circumstances here with some of the actions of the Public Works Department on the berms.
To define our risk.
Well, Ruth, yeah, go ahead.
The risk would be, the risk would be, you know, if other landowners felt strongly that this property does benefit to the current amount it, it benefits today. And that it should remain as such. And I, and I, I see two things in the record that lead me to believe that risk is low. One, no public comment at the hearing today despite notice and an opportunity to do so. And then two, I think an undeniable amount of evidence in the record that this property isn't being used for the agriculture purposes that it was when the last benefits were being determined. So, I, I don't know who would invest personal funds in saying, no, this property should remain as egg benefit. You know, when it's very clearly not being used for that purpose today.
Couple of questions, and for Barb, has, has there any other property owners around this, this Smith property voiced any opinions in terms of like, that particular culvert? Which way does that culvert flow? Does it flow to the Smith or away from? Okay.
County thirty-five has been on the radar for a lot of comments and questions. I don't know, I think, Phil, could you answer some of them? Especially with regard to the culvert, with regard to getting water from the east to the west. Especially with regard to culvert, with regard getting water from the east to the west of that, there's been a lot of different changes. Incidentally, this one was redetermined in nineteen ninety-three, so it's among our newer redeterminations. We're not talking about the nineteen hundreds where things were looked at differently.
And, and what is the cost, annual cost for you guys for this ditch relative to the ditch itself?
That's what I was gonna.
Last year was about five hundred bucks.
Yeah, it changes every year.
It was about five hundred last year. More than our taxes even.
More than our taxes.
And the value of the land is thirty-nine thousand. We're paying five hundred for a ditch fee, so it's a pretty high percentage for our value, just a ditch fee each year.
What is that, what is the, do we know the annual cost of that whole ditch approximately?
It varies as he's coming, commenting, because what we do is take the percentage of overall cost from the county and assess them based on the time spent on it. And there's been a, a fair amount of time spent by staff and other, and then also some repair of that particular situation, which was built in the last round.
But there was ditch cleaning, entry removal, I believe, north of Highway twelve that would have been built to the system in recent years.
Our forty acre parcel pays one point seven four percent of the annual ditch.
One point seven four, that's really what I was looking at, not really an annual dollar. Cause if you guys are removed, then all that burden, the other ninety-eight percent goes to the other guys.
That five hundred dollars gets split, the other.
But it's not five hundred dollars annually. It happened to be five hundred dollars at that particular time because there's work done. I'm just trying to figure out what the, if there's no property owners that have a problem in terms of this and how much trying to redetermine will cost properties down the line to gain one point seven percent is my logic going through it. I don't, the culvert part and stuff of what the county did, I'm not worried about that at, right now because I, you know, there's too many moving parts in terms of this and I'm gonna put any blame one way or another on that.
That's just it. We're willing to let that all go down, but we just want to be off this system because the fact is they trespassed on our property and took our dirt and created this system for us. But redetermining the ditch, which is probably the better thing to do, is actually gonna cost the people of the ditch system more money than just us removing this or one point seven percent from the ditch.
One more question then, for this particular ditch, is there any other, uh, possibilities of, uh, work done on that where redetermination would have to be needed down the line? Or not really?
I don't think so.
Okay, so the ninety-three kind of work has actually kept it, gotten it up to that point where it's a pretty sound ditch at this point. My, my, my point is there probably isn't gonna be any redetermination because ditch work being done to it in the near future.
Are, are you saying that we would have to do a redetermination because the value wouldn't be there?
No, 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 I'm just saying there's no possibility, is there, the ditch is in good shape and there's no possibility of redoing that ditch and then having to redetermination in terms of that, cause usually that's the only part where.
There's no, there's nothing in the foreseeable future that would, uh, merit us doing a re-determination of benefits which would then encompass this project as well. Uh, I, I think that's Danny's question is, you know, the ditch system on county ditch thirty-five overall is a pretty good system, you know, s- within thirty years or right at thirty-year mark of redetermination right now. Um, do we foresee anything that would merit us redetermining it? Because I think if I'm following your math and I'm following my math, at one point seven five percent or of benefit to redetermine and go through what it would cost, it's, it's, there's not a overall or any benefit, but at the same time, I don't know that we have enough input. If, if landowners found out that they're gonna get redetermined, that might change the conversation in the room too on removals, so.
We could also be petitioned by a landowner to consider redetermination and that could come before you.
Yeah, yeah, that we have no control over.
That's why I asked about the risk. If we did lower it, what was the risk to the rest?
But we can't lower it unless you redetermination and then that costs everybody, period, right or not?
Well, he's saying we can do it one time. We can make a isolate, uh, Kale, run us through that scenario.
Yes, I have, I have seen, uh, cases where drainage authorities have said in, in unique circumstances, although the statute says granting the petition is a removal, they will grant the petition in part and deny it in part and order the auditor to change the benefits amount to the lowered benefits amount. So it's not a removal of the thirty-five point six acres, but it's essentially a redetermination for this one parcel.
Which down the line in the future, ten, fifteen years, they'd still be a part of the system, just at a lower benefit for all those time. And then if it was determined.
Yeah, well, well, I'm trying to, I mean, I'm, I'm trying to look at it from the most cost effective. And yet you don't want to penalize the neighbors unknowingly. You know, that they have no idea that. Uh, Ron, do we have a, any inkling of what a new percentage would be on this property? Based on what you, your knowledge of it right now?
No, at this point I have no recommendation as to a reduction in what the benefits should be or could be. I haven't reviewed that at this point. I was looking at it for this hearing as the all or nothing, not an adjustment of benefit values.
Okay.
I could do that for the board if, if you would like me to, but I haven't at this point.
And ask Ron to, if we could further review it at that time.
I think we need to have another hearing, kind of here regardless of.
Ron, how much time would you need to, to do that report?
Uh, you better give me sixty days. I'm still in Tennessee, so I can't, I can't get the information and start looking at it until I get home in early April and then, you know, I would like at least thirty to forty-five days once I get home to get, get all the information and review it and get a written recommendation back to the board.
So Kale, would it be all right if we did the recommended motion that we had in the request for board action instead of using April four, continue this hearing to June six?
See, April, May, that would give Ron the sixty days. Yes, that would work.
So do you want to outline if that recommended motion would work?
So the recommended motion, uh, modified from the board action would be to continue the public hearing to June sixth. Uh, what time, Barb?
Let's go nine o'clock or thereafter as allowed.
Nine o'clock or thereafter as allowed in the commissioner's room and direct, uh, viewer Ron Ringquist to uh, within sixty days file a report recommending a, a benefits dollar amount for this parcel, um, consistent with current land use.
Yeah, I think we need a little bit.
Yeah, I.
Go ahead, Ron.
I will submit my report at least seven days prior to that, so if you look at by the end of May, I will have my report to the board.
All right, thanks, Ron.
I, I have a question.
Go ahead, Julie.
Um, this is a forty acre parcel. We're contemplating removal of some thirty-five acres. But the entire forty acres currently is a one point seven five percent of the total ditch. But five acres would still be, i- if, if we agreed to this and said, okay, thirty-five acres, now that, that comes off. The property owners would still maintain a five acre parcel that would be included in this ditch? I, I'm mixed up on the five acre thing there.
Mister Fisher Schmidt?
Yes, go ahead.
I can, I can answer that. The petition is based on the conservation easement, which does not include the full parcel. The conservation easement is only against thirty-five point six three acres of that forty acre parcel, so there's four acres that are not restricted in the way the conservation easement allows. So the petitioners are only asking for removal of that thirty-five point six three. The, the recommendation asking Ron Ringquist to file a report would, uh, be what is the current benefit for the current land use on that thirty-five point six three acres? If at the continued hearing, the board accepted that report and issued that as a final order, you would have, uh, between four and five acres that are untouched on this parcel and you would have, uh, thirty-five point six three acres that have a reduced benefit.
Okay. So the, the landowners still would be on the ditch and have to make an annual payment based on that five acres or four point something acres.
And the thirty-five point six three acres, but add a much reduced benefit than the current land use.
Okay, thank you.
All right. I would look for a motion.
Yeah, I thought, I was hoping somebody was writing it down as we go, but, so we would be looking for a motion to continue the hearing to June sixth, two thousand twenty-three at nine AM. Um, on the agenda and direct Ron Ringquist to give us a report showing the reduced benefit option. Does that sound right, Kale?
That's correct.
Second.
The motion, Commissioner Johnson, second by Commissioner Schiefelbein. Are there any further questions or discussion? Hearing none. Corey, will you take the role, please?
Commissioner Bredesen?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiefelbein?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes. All right. Thank you all on thirty-five. Now we'll move, uh, to, uh, county ditch forty-eight. We will now turn the public hearing on to the petition of banning county ditch forty-eight. The order of business for this hearing will be as follows. Uh, first Kale Van Bruggen, the Drainage Authority attorney will give overview of the process which is brought us to this public hearing and the purpose of today's public hearing. Following reading Mr. Van Bruggen's presentation, Barb Locke, the Meeker County Otter, will provide evidence for the record of compliance with the Drainage Authority's requirements. Following Mrs. Locke, the petitioners will be provided an opportunity to present the petition and discuss their proposal for abandonment of county ditch forty-eight. Finally, we would like to hear any other interested persons' comments on the abandonment petition. Uh, if you'd like to make a comment when, uh, when the public comment period is open, please come up to the mic and podium, uh, when recognize, and I recognize you, please state your name and address for the record. If you have a specific question concerning the proceedings or the petition, we may ask our staff, the petitioners or our legal counsel to respond to your questions. If you have anything in writing you wish to submit, you can, uh, provide that to me, um, during the public comment period. Would any of the board members wish to offer any other remarks before we begin? Are you good? Kale, I'll turn it over to you. Uh, will you give us a overview of CD forty-eight, please?
Thanks, Chairman Schmidt. A petition for abandonment of the county ditch forty-eight was received by the auditor's office on December twenty-ninth of two thousand twenty-two. That petition was signed by all of the landowners who are listed as benefited by county ditch forty-eight and who pay taxes for the operation and maintenance of this drainage system. The drainage code that the petition was filed under is one oh three E point eight one one. And that states that after the period originally fixed or paying the assessment of a drainage lien expires, the drainage system may be abandoned per the procedures in the statute. And the drainage lien period has long expired for county ditch forty-eight. Um, the petitioners in their petition are essentially stating that there is an agreement among all of the landowners who benefit and, and own the system that's managed currently by the county to privatize it, to manage it now by private contract drafted and recorded against the properties. The landowners have negotiated that contract, um, and they are waiting to record it um, to see what the outcome is of this proceeding before the Drainage Authority Board. So by statute, once this petition is received, uh, the code requires that we notice all landowners on the system of the hearing and that we hold this public hearing today. It's an evidentiary hearing again, and the statute says that if the board finds that the drainage system serves any useful purpose to any property or the general public, that the petition must be denied. Or if you determine that the system does not serve any useful purpose and does not of public benefit utility, then you shall make findings by order to abandon the drainage system. In the notice, we included specific language from the code which states that if any property owner who's assessed benefits appears and makes a written objection to the abandonment, then the board is to appoint three viewers to examine that property and report back to the board on whether or not the system is still providing an abandoned, or a benefit to that property. Um, so, I, you know, I believe we have a situation here where, um, because there is a hundred percent agreement of all landowners, that the petition is alleging the system does not serve any useful purpose to anybody who is affected, and affected being defined by the drainage code as those people who are paying benefits and being assessed for the drainage system. Um, so there will be an opportunity for the petitioners to make comment if they like. There'll be a public comment period and then I'll be available for some recommended actions for the board after that. Chairman Schmidt, are there questions from you or any board members about the process?
I do not. Anybody else? All right. No questions here, Kale. Barb?
Thank you.
Thank you, Kale. Uh, Barb?
Evidence of compliance for the, uh, notification, we published February twenty-second, March first and March eighth. We also mailed notices, posted and did a webpage update so that the public hearing was on notice in that way on February seventeenth.
All right. Is there any board questions for Barb?
I, I have a question. On, on this ditch now, we've, we've got the ditch, is there an inlet to the ditch and an outlet to the ditch beyond the property owners that are currently, currently on the, the piece that we're talking about? I'm, I'm just concerned that.
Did you get that, Julie, the, the answer was?
Okay, thank you.
So in other words, there's just an outlet. If there's not an inlet.
Basically, pretty much comprises of just a, a tile, underground tile.
Okay, well, 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 uh, we'll move into the further discussion, but, all right, Julie, you good?
I'm good, yep.
All right. Um, with that, we're ready to, uh, hear from the petitioners. Um, would any petitioners like come forward and address their petition? Just identify.
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Dale Pearson. My address is one eight five nine seven five hundred and fifty-fifth Avenue, Litchfield.
All right.
Um, I think, uh, basically everything, everyone signing the petition here, all the landowners that are affected pretty much answers all the questions that need to be looked at here, but if there are any questions, I would certainly answer them to the best of my knowledge. Um, the landowners that are currently there work very well together. We have made some repairs and additions to the system and we've gotten along very well together.
How many, how many landowners are there?
Currently, um, I'm not sure, yeah, something like that.
Okay. And is this, I'm, I'm gonna ask this, direct this towards Barb. This would be kind of set up, um, this would be similar to what we've done with other ones where they would have to have a maintenance agreement drawn up, recorded, all that.
These landowners already have a maintenance agreement in place that has not been recorded with the county recorder because one of the stipulations that they were waiting for was approval of the board.
Sure, sure.
For the denial. And I believe if we wanted to, um, bring Phil's comments and our John's comments at this point, um, we would, we would take the evening because John's.
we're kind of tight teaming because John wasn't here, but.
Sure.
County ditch forty-eight um is favorable for the county recommendation to have it abandoned for a few reasons. This is located in Danielson Township. And uh Phil can fill you in on what John provided here.
Yeah, just in brief summary, it's a small system and kind of as we indicated with my no answer is all the properties affected are on the tile system. Um, everyone who's benefiting signed the petition. So we don't really have any concerns out of the ditch inspection side of things.
And I think to add to that, these landowners have been doing maintenance themselves. So the company hasn't done or had costs incurred there um in the five, eight years that we were looking at um in their files. So they've been doing their own.
I just have one because this is new. I'm, I'm for obviously privatizing the ditch. Is there's no liability purposes that would occur to new landowner, like the existing landowners, if someone on the ditch sold it later on? Where they come back and say this was a county ditch, blah, blah, blah? Or does that pretty much nullify all that once we go through with this part? It's more to defend the current landowners in case someone sells.
Go ahead, Kale.
The, a great question. The legal effect of granting the petition is a full abandonment of the right of way. So that right of way would go back to the underlying landowners for each segment. And then also a release of the county for any obligation to repair the drainage system. So uh Barb would levy one final assessment to cover the costs of this proceeding. And thereafter, no petitions could be filed asking for repairs. There's no obligation to inspect. Everything would be governed completely by that uh negotiated private agreement. The county would be hands off completely.
And, and that's where I was kind of going with my comments earlier. We record them documents with each parcel in there. So if it is, does change hands, you, you bought the agreement that's in place. Um, so there's no take backs if we abandon it. Yeah. And that is a requirement of ours, correct, to the landowners to, to enter into this agreement. They need to record that maintenance agreement. Which.
Chairman Schmidt, I do have that. Oh, I'm sorry. I do have that contingency in the draft order in the board packet.
Okay. Sounds good. Any other questions on this?
I spoke with, with John and he said that they've been doing their own maintenance on this system for all. They do very well. It's not, and everybody has signed it. It's down in Danielson, which is a part of my district, but I have heard no objection whatsoever.
Length of this? Do we know I have a length on this? Approximate? I mean, is it a?
I don't know if it's a mile.
Dale? It would not quite be a mile.
Okay, yeah.
Reports, after three reports, I'm working there.
Okay, all right. Just mark here. Any other questions on this one?
A no brainer.
All right. Uh, is there anybody else from the public that wishes a comment on county ditch forty-eight? And does anybody have any written materials that they want to present?
The only written records we receive from them is the draft tile easement agreement and uh the order being approved today, we will uh have them go ahead and file.
There being no further testimony from the public, I hereby close the public comment portion of this hearing. At this point, I would invite Kale uh Van Brugen uh to run us through our options or just make sure we're clear on our options as we come to a close.
Chairman Schmidt and members of the board, uh because there was unanimous signing of this petition by all of the affected landowners, uh staff had asked me to prepare draft findings in order. They're in your board packet. Um, I will certainly go through those draft findings if there's questions or requests to do so. But um, you know, in the interest of keeping costs down for that final assessment, I'll maybe just point out that the staff recommendation is to grant the draft findings in order. And on page four of the order, that order says that the petition for grant abandonment is granted contingent upon the recording of the tile easement agreement, that the Meeker County Auditor and Drainage Inspector are directed to revise the system records to reflect this order and the abandonment of the drainage system. In paragraph C, that effective upon the appeals period applicable for this order, that a repair petition may not be accepted and the responsibility of the Drainage Authority has ended. And then finally directing your auditor to apportion costs of these proceedings against the benefited properties of record and levy a final assessment to those benefited lands as needed to cover the costs of these proceedings. Thereafter, no further levies or assessments against the benefited lands shall be made. So if the board uh feels that the petitioners have met their burden or statute, um which staff feel they have, then the recommendation is a motion to approve the draft findings in order.
All right.
Mr. Chair moved to adopt the findings order to abandon county ditch forty-eight upon recording the tile easement agreement.
We'll second that.
I have a motion, Commissioner Shifelbine, and a second by Commissioner Johnson. Is there any discussion, further discussion? Hearing none. I would ask Corey to take the role, please.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bredeis?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes. Motion carries. I think we're done.
Thank you, Kale, for guiding us through this process.
Thank you, board.
Thanks, Kale. Yep. With that, I will adjourn as county ditch authority and reconvene as the county board. And I think we're done with everything up to Andrew.
Yes, so what I would suggest is that um we, we take our motion to go in close session, take a five-minute break at that point to allow us to get the AV set up for it and then we can get back into things.
Okay. Do we need a motion for close session?
Yes, we do.
All right.
And before that motion, I would just encourage the board to remember our standing rule that we limit the discussion that we're having in closed session to what is listed on the agenda.
Mr. Chair, move to go into closed session pursuant to Minnesota statute thirteen D point zero five subdivision three C three.
Second.
I have a motion, Commissioner Johnson, second Commissioner Shifelbine. Uh, any discussion?
And the purpose for the closed session.
To consider sale of real property. I add that to my.
Corey's got that. All right, Corey, will you take the role, please?
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Shifelbine?
Yes.
Commissioner Bredeis?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes. We are closed. All right, I need a break.